All right, I arrived in the nick of time. So, planning commission agenda for meeting Thursday, April 13th. We'll have the, go ahead and call the meeting order.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Bob?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner.
Present. So, next item on the agenda is approval of the January 12, 2023 minutes as mailed or corrected. Does anybody have any changes they want to make in those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 12th.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 12th.
You have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second, and a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So, the next section on the agenda is public comments. Any person in the, in the audience can come forward and make, and address the planning commission on any item not on the agenda, or any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Any item not on the agenda. We have one item on the agenda, which is an amendment to a conditional use permit, so if you have comments on that particular item, please hold them off until we bring that item up. So, any item that's not on the agenda, or any item within our subject jurisdiction, is there anybody in the audience that wants to come forward and address the planning commission? Seeing none, then we'll move through the public comments on to the next item on the agenda, which is an amendment to the conditional use permit 2016-01. And I'm going to open this public hearing on this item. So, we have the public hearing open at this time, and I'll entertain presentation from our community development director, Holly Owen.
Good evening, Chair Cooper and commission members. I did want to mention at this point, just that we have a new commissioner, Barbara Taylor. Just at the end of this presentation, after, after we take action on this, when we move into my, my part of the agenda, maybe she can introduce herself and say a few things about, about her, her vision for the city and, and her role here, and how, how she came to be sitting here, involved with us. So, with this, I'm going to introduce the amendment to conditional use permit 2016-01 to allow new uses within the 108, 770,000 square foot warehouse building located at 1101 Marion Street in Kingsburg, and finding the amendment to conditional use permit 2016-01 to be categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. The recommended action is, is after the public hearing, please take the following actions with respect to the application for the amendment to the CUP, adopt the attached resolution determining the project is categorically exempt in accordance with CEQA under guideline 15332, urban infill exemption, and approve the attached resolution as presented or as modified by the planning commission, making the findings required by the Kingsburg Municipal Code, Section 17.68.070, and approving the amendment to the conditional use permit 2016-01, subject to conditions attached to this resolution. Just a little review on the history of this project. It was, the original plan was submitted to the city in 2014, and at that time, it consisted of the conversion of the warehouse facility. It was the former Del Monte Plant canning facility, for those of you who remember that as its use, and they were intending to convert that into the primary church facility. The church campus at that location required a general plan amendment and a rezoning of that church property to central commercial, which permit, permitted the churches with a conditional use permit. They then had a general plan amendment and a rezone, and it was approved by the planning commission and city council, but due to the high cost estimates of the conversion of the warehouse building for the additional uses, they elected in 2016 to leave that warehouse building vacant at that time, and to proceed with the approved worship center construction. The applicant in consultation with city staff agreed that any future use or expansion of that warehouse building, or, or expansion of the, of the church property would require necessary entitlements and environmental review as determined by the city. They are requesting at this time, in 2022, they came back with plans for looking at that warehouse use for, for new uses. A site plan review was held in September 2022, an environmental review document was prepared, and at this point, we're here tonight to recommend approval of that. Just so you have a bit of an idea as to what they anticipate, they are going to take that warehouse and propose the following uses, five classrooms, there'll be 14 offices, a commercial kitchen, and a 2,500 or so square foot coffee shop. They were, there'll be several storage spaces, several large and two smaller restrooms, and three high school regulation sized basketball courts. The, there's a designated open space that is, it's actually not designated at this point, it's, it's to be left vacant for, at this time, and that's 9,825 square feet. Any use of that space will undergo city review and, you know, possible new entitlements. We have to make findings with a conditional use permit, according to our code and, and most codes, I think, around the, the country. It is, these, these findings are in our code, and staff has concluded that the proposed new, new uses of the warehouse are consistent with the applicable, applicable provisions of Title 17 of the Kingsburg Municipal Code, and we also find that the proposed project complies with the applicable provisions of Title 17 of the municipal code, including parking setback, height requirements, and that the proposed project complies with other local and state regulations. Environmental document was prepared by an outside consultant, it's included as attachment E to the staff report, and as proposed, this project will not have a significant impact on the environment. There are in your, there is in your packet, a couple of sets of conditions, there, in addition to that, several resolutions that you have, there is the, the conditional use, attachment B is the conditional use permit 1601, original conditions of approval, and there are then the new conditions of approval as attachment C. Some of the conditions in attachment B were, were carried forward into attachment C, and some timelines were, were given for those to be met in order to achieve either building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. This concludes my presentation, I'm here to answer any questions, the applicants are also here, they may want to say a few words about their project. It's been quite a, it's been, it's been a process, it's been a quick process, I would have to say, from a planning side, I'm sure that the, that the church may not feel quite that way, but we are, we're happy that we're able to work with them and, and to get this here to a hearing today. So, that concludes my staff report, thank you.
For my own clarification, just one more time, attachment B, does that include some of the original conditions, or is that a combination of original and new?
The, the attachment B is, is the original conditions from 2016, and then the attachment C includes some of those previous conditions, mostly in the circulation section, they were carried over. We went, we were pretty careful in going through the, the original conditions to see what had been met, and what needed to be brought forward and, or, or updated, and those are in your attachment C.
Do we have to, are these attachments included in the resolution that we're approving, or, this is just for our, our information?
The, 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 the conditions for attachment C are, are as part of the resolution.
Okay. Is it just understood when you read through the resolution that the attachments are going to be part of the resolution? I don't see the, I don't see the attachments listed, A, B, C, D, and E, is that, is that significant, or no?
The resolution 2023, the third, one, two, three, the fourth, whereas, mentions that conditions of approval attached hereto, and it says attachment A to this resolution, it would, it would have been more clear had that been attached as A as well as C, but the attachment C is, are the, are the conditions that you would be reviewing and approving tonight. And our city attorney is here to make any other further clarifications.
When and if the resolution is, is brought forward for approval, the resolution will be approved, subject to and with the conditions identified on Exhibit C to the staff report. That would be part of the motion.
Run that by me again.
The motion for the resolution would be to approve the resolution, subject to the conditions of approval that will be attached to the resolution in the form of Exhibit C to the staff report.
Okay, so Exhibit C is the, is the meeting one that we need to include as part of the resolution, the other ones are just for our information, basically? Now, should that wording be included in the resolution now?
Well, it will be included in the motion approving the resolution.
All right.
Then staff will attach the exhibit to the resolution subsequent to its adoption by the commission.
Okay, well, when somebody makes the move, when somebody makes the motion to approve the resolution, we will call on you to give us the wording to add that to the resolution, so we make, make sure we get the right wording in.
That's fine.
Because I cannot remember exactly what you said.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the, is there any commission discussion on the information Holly gave us, or anything in our package that you would like more clarification on?
I'm just curious, because I can't see this mapped very clearly, it's just curiosity. I'm assuming that these, these are the offices, but where are the classrooms?
Carol, maybe you can bring up the figures. Thank you. The classrooms are to the, to the south, there are four classrooms. Yeah, there's some down below.
Oh, there's more down there. Oh, those are also classrooms?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just didn't, couldn't see it very well. So, that's five classrooms.
One had a designation that wasn't entirely, entirely a classroom.
Those are four classrooms or five classrooms?
You want five. You don't want any.
It's five classrooms.
Okay, okay, it said four. Thank you for that.
The resolution says five.
Must have misread it.
No, it's my error on the, on the staff.
All right, any more commission discussion items? Or questions, seeing none, then I'm going to open the meeting for public comment on this particular issue. Anybody from the public would like to come forward and speak on this issue, you're welcome to do that now, if you have any questions or other issues you want to discuss, you're welcome to come forward now. Seeing no interest for that offer, I will go ahead and close the public comments section, and bring it back for continued commission discussion and decision. Any other, any other questions or issues that the commission is interested in? All right, then, I think I can entertain a motion, we have two resolutions we need to, to decide on, is that correct, Holly?
Yes.
All right. One of the resolutions is categorical, categorical exemption from CEQA to allow new uses. My assumption is that particular resolution does not include category C, is that correct? Categories, attachment C would go under the next resolution?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023 dash, what is it, 2023 dash?
01.
01? Okay. Entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023-01, a categorical exemption to allow new uses within this warehouse. Anybody want to make a motion? We have, we have a motion to, to approve the resolution for the categorical exemption, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, and the new commissioner, Barbara. Any discussion on the motion or amendments? Seeing none, then, I'll call for a vote on the issue, all in favor of this resolution, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, this motion passes to approve resolution number 2023-01. The next resolution is, I guess it's 2023-02? Approving an amendment to conditional use permit 2016-01 to allow new uses within the warehouse. All right, so, anybody interested in making that motion to approve this resolution, with the understanding that we're going to add some wording to this for attachment C? Any interest in a motion for this? We have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-02, and the attorney is going to add the wording for attachment C, which would be what?
Subject to the conditions of approval that are identified on, on attachment C to the staff report.
Okay, you got that? Very good. All right. So, that is our, that is our motion for resolution 2023-02. Do we hear a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Motion and a second to pass that resolution, is there any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question, all in favor of passing resolution number 2023-02 with the addition of attachment C? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, that, that amendment is approved. All right, anything else we need to do on that issue, Holly?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay. Then, we have discussion items, I think this is probably where Holly's going to come into play here.
Yes, thank you, Chair Cooper. I wanted to take a moment just to introduce a couple of people here, I, I think that many of you know A.J. O'Connell, he's our building official, he's actually been here nearly a year, it's hard to believe, but he is a trusted member of, of my staff, very hardworking, keeps the bar high for all of us, I would say, and I'm, we're very glad to have him back after unexpected medical leave, but if he wanted to say just a few words, I don't, it's up to you, A.J., you said, "I didn't wear a tie."
I didn't wear a tie, that's not the question.
Just a few now, A.J., just a few.
Commissioners, thanks so much for, I got a chance to meet most of you, I hope I get the chance to speak with all of you soon, my door is always open, any questions that you may have, you're always welcome to come right along as well on inspections, if you'd like. Happy to be here, happy to work with you, and there's exciting stuff going on in Kingsburg, and you're all involved, and let's have some, have some productive conversations moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Now, I know it would only take some time to have Barbara Taylor introduce herself, she's stepped up to fill, fill a vacancy, and I wanted to know a little bit about her, and I imagine we all do, some of us obviously know her, however.
I assume I can speak from here.
Yes.
I'm Barbara Taylor, I've lived in Kingsburg for about 35 years, became here when my husband was named police chief, and, but this time, he and I are both volunteers at the police department, we're volunteer chaplains, and I also do substitute teaching at the high school level, and I'm glad to be back on the, on the council here, I was here several years ago and had to leave for personal reasons, and I'm glad to be back, and I'm just amazed at the growth that this city is feeling at this point, that's not the word I mean, but anyway, that, you know, there's so much growth in all the new homes and stuff, it's just kind of mind blowing, and I just wanted to be part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you for joining, hope we can maintain your interest, at least once a month. Yeah, I know Barbara, Barbara and I go back many, many years, so we know each other pretty well, and I'm glad she joined up, because her, her knowledge of Kingsburg and her experience will help the commission a great deal, so thanks for joining.
Thank you.
Next item? On discussion items, housing element, general plan.
An update on other planning activities. So, thank you, thank you, Chair Cooper and members of the commission. I just wanted to update you briefly on the housing element, it is an ongoing process this year, we have a team of consultants that are helping us and 12 other cities to navigate this, this verbal obstacle course, there's a lot of, it is a mapping exercise, I want to emphasize that as much as I can, because what this, what this means is that we are looking at any barriers, perceived barriers, to creating more housing and a diversity of housing, and so, the exercise is to, is to look at Kingsburg as a whole, and look at where growth has occurred, identify vacant or underutilized parcels, and make sure that the zoning for residential is, is a reality. Whether or not that gets built or not is entirely up to the market, and up to willing participants, and people that would be, be eager to come in and, and offer that kind of housing. But the, the state requires us to at least remove, remove what they would perceive as obstacles to, to housing. So, we are in the process of identifying those sites, you will, you will have another presentation probably in, in the two months' time, one to two months' time, from guided by the consultants, to show, you know, some of those options, and take recommendations from them. This process has a deadline of, of December of this year, we are a little bit behind, but not, not personally necessarily, just collectively, so we need to, you know, make sure that, that our energies are focused, when, you know, when a, decisions need to be made, that, you know, we, we do our part, and I think it's all, it's going to work out, it's been a little bit of a different housing element to navigate, they come up once every seven years, the last one I was, happened to be involved with, with Kingsburg, it was a little bit of an easier, an easier process than it is now, and some of that just has to do with state law and legislative priorities that exist today. So, there's, there's that task, and you will, you will, you will see meeting notices coming in the next quarter, as to, you know, your involvement and, and your review of that, of that information. The general plan RFP was released, we had several submittals, we're in the process of looking at those submittals, and I'll be taking a recommendation to the finance committee, or at least the materials to the finance committee, and we will hopefully get a little more clarity as to what both parties are offering, I would just as soon not rerun a, a request for proposal again, it's, it's time consuming, it's, it's a pretty big budget item, but we have not updated our general plan in 30 years, and we, we're expected to do it every 10 years. Now, one of the things I will say about the general plan that Kingsburg has now, from 1993, it's really stood the test of time philosophically, I think it really speaks to the community values, I hope that that message continues in any new general plan that we, we may adopt, but it does, it will be helpful for us to have an updated general plan in a number of ways, we're eligible for more grants, it, we can use the environmental document to assist businesses who might, might have to spend a lot of money on, on environmental documents, but they, if, if we have an updated general plan, they can use that as a sort of an umbrella to get environmental approvals more quickly and in a streamlined fashion. So, it's an important thing for the community, it's just, it's a big decision, and I will keep you posted on that.
Are you at liberty to tell us approximately what it's going to cost?
I would prefer to keep, it's, we're, we're in negotiations, let's just say, so, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's an investment, it's an investment, so. I wanted to just talk a little bit about current planning activities, I think I, I mentioned it to you last time we had a meeting, we, the economic development consultant that I meet every week, and we talk about, about what we've heard, and about who she's heard from, and about where projects are in the process. So, I know that A.J. and I speak frequently also, once, once they're in plan check, or, you know, they're calling for inspections, we try to, we really try to facilitate any kind of obstacles that we see and anticipate coming, and we, we try to move things along. So, just so you know, Stone Plaza is moving forward, happy to say, I think we can all see that progress, and we can hear that progress, too. Valley Health Team came in for some signage that they wish to see, so that means to me usually that they're, they're getting ready to, to turn the corner and open. We have several projects that are working on easement issues due to fire access and other, and vehicular easement, one of those is the Swedish, the mill, the Swedish mill property that's now being developed, the other one is Magosh, so, we're helping to facilitate some of their easement issues, and, and hopefully that will, that will clear their path to, to getting what they need to, to get going on their projects, and the Union 76, proposed gas station next to Dollar Tree, it's a vacant lot now, it doesn't look like a Union 76, but it's been talked about for a long time, that will be That will be, that's, right now, we're working on the grading and the, I think the canopy, actually, for some approval on that. The Sinclair Gas Station has changed, changed their plans just a little bit. They're, they're going to have a fairly, a fairly major remodel. There's a well-known architect who was working on the project who had some, some serious health issues recently, and so that slowed their, their progress down a little bit, but it, it still looks, the proposals are still, still fairly, fairly dramatic, and that's his style, so it will not look like the Sinclair that, of old, let's just put it that way. The only other thing I probably could share with you, there's, there's a map that was approved west of Academy and south of CAM that may change hands, so we may see some residential development there. It is an approved map. It's been lingering for a long time, and we weren't sure whether it was going to expire or not, but it may get picked up by new owners. We're, we will know in the next couple of months on that. And you may be, it's, it's a, it's a property that's just north of where Century Communities is now building, north and a little west. And then I've heard that BLD, the BLD restaurant, has been an escrow, and then not an escrow, and now an escrow again, potentially, so there's a, there's a potential new restaurant at that location eventually, when, when all the dust settles. So, that's all I have for right now in terms of updates. You are always free to call me if you've got any questions or hear anything about projects that you want some, some verification on. It's, it's, even though we've had some economic slowdowns, I would still say that it's a busy time in, in our department, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the commission have any questions or comments? I think that's the end of it. All right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming. Our, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for coming, too. I appreciate it.